All right, it is 5:15, October 3, 2023. I will call the meeting to order. Jane, will you do roll call, please?
Rudolph?
Here.
Shaven?
Here.
Kroger?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
Lindberg?
Here.
Councilmember Beelenberg will be absent tonight.
We've all been given the agenda. I don't think there's any additions, subtractions. There are motion to approve the agenda.
Motion.
Motion by Peterson, second by Kroger.
Roll call Rudolph?
Aye.
Shaven?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Lindberg?
Aye.
Thank you.
Next up, I guess any conflicts, state them now or along the way if they occur. Under the consent agenda, this is all enacted by one motion with a roll call vote. We have the minutes of the September 19, 2023 council meeting, the minutes of the special council meeting on the 27th of September, and the claims list number 1299 in the amount of $143,961.47. Everybody kind of saw the larger amounts. Any questions for any of those? Nope. There are motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion.
Motion by Lindberg, second by Shaven.
Roll call Rudolph?
Aye.
Shaven?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Lindberg?
Aye.
Thank you.
Under the other business, we have review of the street closing permit for Shelby County Chamber Harvest Fest on the Hall of Downtown Square on October 28 from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. I think everybody signed off on that. Anybody have any concerns or questions?
I have one comment. Todd's here as well. If there are questions, we'll do it similar as we have in the past, in which the four streets are not accessible, yet you can turn right at all corners. So if you approach the square from any of those directions one way, you can still turn right, so it doesn't create any traffic issues.
Yeah, the main thing is just to try to keep the traffic off the streets while the kids are out there running around, playing games, and doing their thing. And then this year, we will have 12 different craft and junk and other type of vendors around on the north side and on the east side. So of course it helps to not have traffic flowing down the hall there.
And then you can also expect at next meeting, and Todd's office reached out today, that there's on the east side, one of the vendors or providers is wanting to set up on Friday, or Friday evening, and take up a couple parking spaces. I recommended that for consistency and awareness, that you also approve those couple parking spaces being occupied on Friday. So you'll see a similar permit for...
For the next meeting, there'll be one.
The next meeting.
That'll be just for the... There are the two parking spaces that are directly across from Oral Elegance on the courtyard side on the east side.
On the inside part of it?
Yeah, yeah, but there's a vendor who wants to be directly across from them, and they, you know, they're taking up two spaces, and they wanted to be able to set up on Friday, so I'm sure it's got something to do with their schedule, not having time to do it.
Just wanted to give you a heads up on that.
And that probably put homes out, just block those spaces.
Shouldn't be an issue, but felt for transparency and having your review of that was also important.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the permit for the street closing?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Rudolph, second by Peterson.
Roll call Rudolph?
Aye.
Shaven?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Lindberg?
Aye.
Thank you.
Next, we have, we need to review and file the airport commission minutes from September 27, 2023. Everybody have a chance to look at those? Are motion to approve those minutes?
Make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Kroger, second by Shaven. You're...
Late.
Yep.
That's net.
I had to change it. Roll call Rudolph?
Aye.
Shaven?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Lindberg?
Aye.
Thank you.
Sorry.
I heard your voice.
I thought I was my celebrity, because Troy and I sound alike.
Out of that, those minutes, the meeting, we need to look at the Airport Terminal Apron Rehabilitation Project Resolution 2543, accepting the completion of the Airport Rehab Terminal Apron Project. You want to address that one, Jean?
The action items continue to be improvements in our completion on projects at the airport, Sharon Kroger being the liaison. So Sharon's been present and been very involved with that commission. And the three outcomes of their last meeting is what's in front of you for final stamp of approval or review. This is, this resolution relates to the apron rehab project, which was completed over a year ago, yet this is another, you know, example of projects that follow that 95.5 or 98.2, meaning that 95% or 98% gets done, and then getting that last 2% to 5% with the contractor or contractors. So the contractors come out and done some of the final punch list, or for the second and third time, it's been reviewed and approved by the commission, and this would be the final step to put this project to bed, and a nice improvement there with the apron rehab, and which would also release the retainer on the project. Sharon might want to add on this one.
It's been in process.
Is there a motion for Resolution 2543?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Rudolph, second by Lindberg.
Roll call Rudolph?
Aye.
Shaven?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Lindberg?
Aye.
Next, we have Airport Hangar Number Three Door Replacement Project, Resolution 2544, IDOT Funding Agreement for General Aviation Vertical Infrastructure Program for the installation of Hangar Number Three Door Replacement.
Some of this may sound familiar, because this would be our third agreement and program through the IDOT Aviation Bureau. And Hangar Number Six, we've completed all five doors there, and we had applied last year to begin these hydro swing doors on Hangar Six. We were not approved last year for the state funding, yet as we previously reported on, we were approved this year. The agreement finally came through, so this item, as well as the next item on the agenda, relate to beginning that project, just for... This was example on the screen here of the hydro swing doors that will likely be the same style and look on hangars with Hangar Door, or Hangar Number Three. This is the completed project on Hangar Number Six. So versus the rail doors that are rusted and can't get open half the time and freeze shut, and this is what this project would involve, are involved. So the first item of this first resolution is the agreement for 150,000 of funds from the Vertical Infrastructure Program, 125,000 of that is covered by the state.
I assume it's not, we pay for it and reimbursed to the state?
Yes.
Any comments or questions about that? Is there a motion to approve Resolution 2544?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Kroger, second by Peterson.
Roll call Rudolph?
Aye.
Shaven?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Lindberg?
Aye.
Thank you.
And the next would be the Resolution 2545, approving Kirkman and Michael Engineering Services Agreement for Hangar Number Three Door Replacement, which basically is the same thing, just agreement with our...
Engineers.
Engineers helping us out, so.
And this scope of the agreement, as well as the fees, the fees are not changed from two years ago with the previous project. There's some structural components with the headers and concrete, so this would authorize them for up to $9,350 to their services.
Kirkman and Michael have been really great partners working with these projects at the airport. I know it's dollars, but they are resident experts, so.
It's good to go the right way the first time. I'll make that motion here.
Motion by Lindberg, second by Kroger. Sorry, Troy, you have just too soft of a voice. I can hear better, maybe on the other end.
It's okay.
Roll call Rudolph?
Aye.
Shaven?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Lindberg?
Aye.
Thank you.
Moving right along, City Administrators Report.
Host of updates and activities that want to provide to you, as well as the community and others. Jane, I had the opportunity to go to the League of Cities Annual Conference, which was in Cedar Rapids, was excellent, excellent conference. And reminder that a year from now, we'll be in Western Iowa in Sioux City, and would be, you know, one of the primary focuses for the conference is education, learning, and networking. And it's a conference where many other elected officials is, are a target audience for the conference. And although Jane and I, you know, we're regulars, gives us an opportunity to network amongst our peers and also talk to vendors and current providers at the exhibit hall. Hopeful a few of you could make some time next year to make one or two days up in Sioux City, certainly understanding the commitment. Yet, if we continue to work with you as a governing body, I think an opportunity for you to, you know, meet and interact with other governing officials that, I believe you bring back some new ideas that might either challenge us or question us, or create some, some new things that we don't, you know. We're blessed to work with a great team here, yet the value of outside perspectives and information from the league would always be valuable. So stay tuned for, I guess, put it on your next September calendar, and we'll look for that opportunity next year. I know a number of officials, and I know Jane, many of her peers that she'll interact with, yet one of the projects that, at least amongst my peers, with our change in delivery of law enforcement services this spring, I interacted with a number of my administrators that said, now, how did you do that, or what led up to that? Because we're facing similar situations, as one example. So provides that opportunity for us to use best practices, what worked, didn't work. And the other highlight I would say from the conference, and Jane, please pipe in here, is the, the property tax reform, uncertainty, and don't want to use the term anxiety, but maybe some anxiety, but uncertainty going into this, this budget season and the next three or four years. Jane and I enrolled for the Advanced Budget Workshop in November, that will provide us greater insight, or I shouldn't say insight, but as we near that time of getting our property valuations and the, say, the, the new CGFL, the Consolidated General Fund Levy, all these acronyms, that receiving those two pieces of, or those two numbers will be a real aha, or telltale sign as to what are we looking at? What might we need to adjust? What might we need to scale back on? Do we need to change some, reduce some services? Don't know if we'll be faced with that this year, but there will be some, and these are common discussions that other municipalities are starting to have, because of the clawback or ratchet back in the, as far as ratcheting back growth. Property taxes, like or not, that's the reality of where revenue comes from, and we all know that the cost of goods and services, just like in the private sector, the public sector is subject to those same things. And, you know, some of our costs, such as insurance and utilities and just cost of doing business, those continue to increase. So stay tuned for a fun budget season. Yep, that was, I think, a common theme at our conference as well. Some other updates, the HomeServe Service Line Program, you can expect at the next meeting to have the marketing agreement in front of you. That, as you may recall, reviewed back in July or August, and HMU Board has been reviewing it, and they had a presentation last week on the water, external water service line, and the Board is not pursuing, HMU Board is not pursuing that. So the marketing agreement will show the sanitary sewer and inside service lines, so you can look forward to that agreement at the next meeting, but that is, we're seeing progress there. We received notice from IDDA that the Catalyst Grant for 919 Seventh Street, which is the new Milk and Honey, was not approved, so I expect we'll anticipate that next go around or next year that we apply for that, or if there's another interested property owner, we've received notice that was not approved. As you came into City Hall tonight, or if you've driven by City Hall, the continued facelift is happening, and just like many things, there's always opinions, and so not sure if you're pro or con on the new color, but...
Looks good.
Overall, we've seen a lot of positive feedback. There's some finish up and painting that has to happen on the backside, some other soffit work, but overall, the project's looking great in a facelift. If you've not noticed, maybe you have noticed, but on your way out tonight, take a look at the marquee sign or digital sign, and look at the second panel down, because that's not changed out, so. So maybe there'll be a quiz at the next meetings, do you know what got changed out or not? So continuing improvements at City Hall here. Street Departments, update, continued significant improved progress on ash tree removal, so year-to-date, close to 85, so significant impact there on the ash trees. For property owners that there's concern and questions, we get about if some of the bark is coming off of those ash trees. Unless there's other rot areas or splits, from what we learned from the DNR is, you know, that peeling or flaking away of the bark is not considered a, it's just a change due to no other, I guess, life in the tree, but structurally, unless there's other rot or splitting going on, we'll get to those just as we work through sections of the city, so, and we've been responding to property owners on that. With the change in seasons, leaves starting to fall, and you've seen the street sweep route, so expect that'll continue to be pretty consistent over the next month, the street, street sweeping cleanup. Next week is Fire Prevention Week. There'll be activities, I know, at the school, some show and tell with fire equipment, and I believe also that the Fire Department will be offering pizza delivery. Is that right, Richard? I think that was reviewed at one of the last meetings.
Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
So Tuesday through Thursday, and that helps create awareness of that essential and service of fire, and also provides some good driver training, as well as address training for inordinate members, or, so provides the training opportunity as well. Stay on the Fire Department. Chief Beeson was successful in receiving a fireworks grant that applied for, and that has purchased a, actually, I think, on this claims list, if I'm not mistaken. So that $11,340 was for a flame extinguisher trainer, so it's a simulator. We're still to receive it, I believe, but that's fully funded by this fireworks grant and pass off for, it's the second one we've gotten. The previous one we got was for fire, for the turnout gear and getting an updated washing machine for that from the previous grant. Reminder once again to the public that EMS meetings and public meetings are continuing to happen. The final two meetings are this week. Tonight is in Defiance, and then Thursday is at the Turkle Center. Those are all at 7:00 p.m. Great opportunity to hear from the panel, the advisory group, on background, and also question and answer. Would direct the public also to the county website. There's a link on there for the EMS Advisory Council, all of the minutes, the frequently asked questions, give you, give some examples within that frequently asked questions as to the property tax impact on, be it farm ground, commercial ground, and residential property, are all included in that. So spend, I would say, sparse attendance at the ones last week. I was able to attend a few, yet the opportunity is there to learn more and become more educated for a really important vote on the ballot, November 7, for EMS as an essential service. And the last item I have, as follow-up on our last Streets Committee meeting, been in touch with the DOT regarding Highway 44 and opportunities to improve pedestrian and traffic safety. They're providing some follow-up information to me on the process and application for the speed control signs, and then also the additional information on either a, let's call it, traffic and traffic study for either four lane to three lane, as well as possible pedestrian crossing between the wellness center and the hospital to improve pedestrian safety. So stay tuned for more on that. And then the other outcome of that meeting is we've been in touch with a contractor on alternative structure and possible costs or estimated costs on a fourth street bridge replacement versus the concrete culverts, concrete boxes that were proposed. So don't have that yet, but we've met with the contractor on site, and we'll be getting more design and cost information on that. And with that, it's been pretty quiet, otherwise, nothing else going on. If I happen to answer any questions or comments that you have.
Jean, just to piggyback on your EMS advisor thing, for those of you on the Facebook world, or Facebook world, they are live streaming those now on their Shelby County Emergency Management page, so if those people are unable to make it, Alex, they've actually livestreamed the last two, or the first one was not, but the last two have been, so.
That's off what page?
The Shelby County Emergency Management page. If you just search Shelby County Emergency Management, it comes up with the blue logo, they'll, they'll be live, so you can actually go back and review the other ones if you don't have the time to make during the live session, but it's a good tool to get it out there for additional people who can make it, so.
And we can share that, share that link again on Facebook.
Anything else for Jean? Questions, comments?
Oh, I did have one more. Halloween is going to be up until the end of the month. We're not over it already, and Halloween will be Tuesday, October 31st, from 5:30 to 7:30, consistent with the last couple of years as far as timeframes, and we've already put that out on our Facebook page, so I think someone already shared that. Yep, just a warning to the community, the official trick-or-treating on Halloween is Tuesday, October 31st, from 5:30 to 7:30. So get your costumes figured out, go bags for candy, it's a great night. Don't know if it's going to be snowing or something, but we wanted to...
95.
Take your time.
That's all I have, Mayor, unless you have more.
See, Harvest might be over by the time Harvest Fest comes around. Interestingly, that may actually be true. Yeah. When we used to do the Beer Festival, we tried to do it in the late October, and we kind of had to give it up, because there was just too many people still out in the field. They didn't have time to come to the Beer Festival. But yeah, no, this is, this is an interesting, that happened a few years ago, and now, where's the beer? We're done, but anyway.
All right, thanks, Jean, for your information. Under my report, I have a proclamation this time, recognizing October 15th as a day of remembrance and awareness for pregnancy and infant loss, which is a, I don't know if we've done this in the past, but it is something that I think this is maybe, hopefully raising more awareness for. It does, I don't know, I mean, I remember so much with growing up, but I, now as a father and a grandfather, I am well aware of, in our community and our families, that when this happens, this is a, this is a tough, tough thing to have for a family and your friends, and it basically, I'm not going to read through the proclamation tonight, I'll just give you some different information, and I will read the last part. They will have a candlelight ceremony, and Michelle's here, Munson, from the hospital, on the 15th at Potter's Park, gather at 6:30, lighting the candles at 7, right, Michelle? And this, this comes about from a tragedy, from miscarriage, stillbirth, preterm birth, sudden infant death, SIDS, accident or causes, and complications, you know, either during or after the birth of a child, and I don't know of any other grief, how hard that hits a family, and I think this just would make it more aware that it is in our community, and to be aware of that and be conscious of those families, and if they're your friends, whatever, but it is a very hard thing to deal with as a family, and also, what do you say, you know, to people that this has happened to them? So this proclamation, just more with the hospital and the city, is just making that more aware of what's going on out there, and it is going on. And to support those people, you know, family, friends, in any way you can, even just by kind words. You don't really have to do anything, but just, just to be there for, you know, a hug or a shoulder, or whatever it takes to, to help, because that, that really never goes away when you lose a child, no matter what age that is, so. And I would just say, as Mayor of Harlan, I would proclaim the 15th of October as Pregnancy and Infant Loss Awareness Day in the City of Harlan, and encourage parents, caregivers, and all residents to become educated in opportunities to prevent pregnancy and infant loss and support bereaved families when prevention is not possible. And with that, I'd like people to wear the 15th, if you want to come, Potter's Park, 6:30, 7 o'clock, and be a part of that. I will, I am planning on attending that, so I appreciate Michelle bringing that to my attention, so. That's all I have under my, under my report. Shelby County Chamber of Commerce and Industry, Todd Veleen.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Just a couple of informational items for yourselves and for the community. Just a reminder that next week, next Tuesday, we'll be having our Hotel Motel Grant meeting to review the applications we have received for this quarter, and we have six new applications that are in, so hopefully we'll be able to support the projects that they want to work on. Just started happening now, and it'll run through Harvest Fest, is the Scare Pro Showdown, so just a reminder to businesses to, you know, decorate your business with a fall theme. Right now, the overall theme board is just celebrate the season, and that'll lead up to October 15th, when we'll open up voting online, you know, we'll have pictures of all the people who have decorated their buildings, and the public vote. And the two winners, the first place winner will have a choice between some on-air ads with K-Not or a quarter-page ad in the paper, and then whichever one they choose, the second place will get the other one, so. But it's always a lot of fun, kind of gets festive, people do a good job decorating their buildings, so looking forward to seeing those going up. And then that will lead into Harvest Fest, as we were talking about on the 28th, that's going to be a very, very fun-filled day. We've got some new games for the kids, got some other new things that are taking place, of course, food, pumpkin decorating, and movies, and the whole bit, so just come on down to the square, everything will be kicking off at 9:30 on that Saturday morning. And then finally, through Iowa Economic Development, over the last six to eight months, they've had a couple committees working on putting together a statewide business retention survey, and then now that they just issued it to us, so I'll be meeting with a lot of the local businesses and going through this questionnaire. For the businesses themselves, the information they give us, of course, is just anonymous, it just gets fed into a database, it doesn't say who it came from. But not only, but we then have some local data on needs and, and things, infrastructure, other things that businesses are telling us that they need to be able to grow and expand, but we'll also then receive some statewide information to, to see how we compare against, you know, other communities throughout the state or our side. So it'll take a few months to get it all put together, but looking forward to getting those results. And other than that, that's it for the Chamber time.
Thanks, Todd.
Thank you.
HMU, Joe Russenberg is up next.
Hello, everyone.
Joe?
Just update on our rural water project. It's going well. We completed one of our large tie, excuse me, our large tie-ins today, as far as tying in some closed mains down in the South Oilfield to our existing system. in some hose mains down in the south wellfield to our existing system. So we were down, I think about three hours, which I think did very well getting that down, making the connection, getting things back up and running as far as the wells. That was a 10 inch line that we tied in. Should be filling and testing both the 10 inch line and the 8 inch line that we've already got tied in, the 8 inch line also in the south wellfield this week. So things are progressing well there. Pressure tests, bacteria tests come back good, then we'll start gradually tying in the existing wells to those two new lines. Well contractor actually moved on site yesterday and was setting up today to start drilling the first new, one of the first new four wells. So he should be getting going on that first well here this week, so that's progressing. Next item, our yearly audit was received and filed at our board meeting last Thursday. So that'll be then, I guess the process is then get that to the city for approval.
Doesn't get re-released?
Well, I guess it doesn't get reviewed, but I mean, yeah.
It just gets filed.
Gets filed. Next item, just to remind you of the public, these Harlan residents to complete your lead service line survey. And we didn't get, we had it out on, I mean, we got it out on social media to try to get that done and just haven't got much response. Just to save us from trying to have our guys work evening hours, you know, extra time to try to go into the houses and actually finish those surveys. But it's fairly simple, just go to our, our website and then go to the, under public notices and under that notices the survey. It's fairly easy to fill out, you just got to take a picture of your service line coming in, try to determine if it's, you know, if there is any lead galvanized in it or if it's just copper. But we do have to have, that's mandated by the state that we do have to have that information for every household, so it's pretty important to try to get that completed.
Is that an EPA driven, I have as well, Joe?
Correct, yeah. And then they're going to look at it, I mean, we're going to have to start replacing. So we'll have to start replacing those lead service lines at some point. You know, they say there's funding out there, but I guess, you know, I don't think they quite have that figured out as far as how that mechanism is going to work or the amount that you'll be able to get if there's a match and so forth, but we're working through that. But that is the first step is to try to get all those, that lead service line survey done for the community and, you know, then we can keep moving forward. And then lastly, this was another, Gene and I talked about it too, Gene thought it'd be good to kind of mention, we did mention it at our board meeting last Thursday. We're starting or we're trying to move forward with trying to get additional capacity for our natural gas. We do have to have a committee meeting here and then hopefully by our October meeting, hopefully we can have some approval to move forwards with part of the improvements. Total project, just to get another 500 to 1,000 MCF, which is a 1,000 cubic feet is one MCF. So we're going to try to pick up another 500 to 1,000. And the bad thing about that, I guess, we're kind of behind the eight ball. That 500 will probably get us kind of where we need to be as a baseline, so it doesn't really give us a lot of extra. So down the road, we probably have to try to, try to do another increase as we move forward just to get additional capacity for, you know, other industries that come to town. But basically just to get this 500 to 1,000 additional capacity, we're looking at about five and a half million dollars. Of that, there's about three quarters of a million of that is just specifically for our town board station, which is just on the north side of Highway 44, north of Ascencia out there. That's basically where we go from northern natural gas pipeline to our system. So there's improvements that got to be done at that town board station to prepare us to receive that additional capacity. So basically we're looking at, and as a recommendation by Clayton Energy, who does our natural gas purchasing, you know, to go ahead, I think with that portion, really, but then there's an open season, they call it, to where anybody that's on the branch line that we're on, that they call the Dannison Branch Line, because it ends up in Dannison. There may be other communities that would also want additional capacity, so they go out on what they call an open season. They contact those people on that branch line to see if anybody else wants additional capacity. If they do, then they can help share in that cost. So at this point, that five and a half million is kind of the max number. Basically, if nobody else needs any additional capacity, that would be all our cost, each of the use cost. But there's a possibility if you do an open season, somebody else needs additional capacity, that'll be offset by those other communities that might need that additional, you know, they would join in and share some of that cost. But regardless, that three quarters of a million, I think we got to do regardless and that would be totally our cost. So what we're looking at, trying to move forward that just because it's a constant thing, we got to try to stay ahead, just same way with our well project. You know, I mean, there's not a lot done. Now we're trying to play catch up and it's kind of the same way on that gas, I think. We're trying to play a little bit of catch up and hopefully then we can look forward into the future and try to stay ahead with our projects, so.
How many communities would be involved in that, Joe? With open season, how many are we looking at that would join in if they, if they wanted to?
Well, there's Dannison, Audubon, I'm trying to think who's all on that line. Can't remember, like Manning, Manoa's on that same branch line. So maybe like I said, they would be approached to see if they want additional capacity. Right now with Clayton Energy, you know, we're in that pool of, does he have 55 other municipalities or cities? Right now, there's some town like Waqee has, has extra gas. So the next two, three years, we're in pretty good shape as far as if we need additional volume, we're kind of getting that from other, other municipalities that are in that pool. But like Waqee, you know, they're, I guess Bill Clayton, or Bill Lindon with Clayton Energy mentioned, they're really building a lot of houses in Waqee, you know, they're really exploding. So at some point, two, three years down the road, that additional capacity that, that we're getting, you know, purchasing is going to be gone. So I mean, we're going to need our own. So like I said, we've probably got a couple, you know, two, three years to try to get this open season done, get this modification done. So we're in better shape at that point. So we're just trying to stay ahead of it. I hope that answers your question.
Yep.
I guess any other questions on any of those items? Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Thanks, Joe.
Public comments, I guess I did, Michelle, did you want to say anything? I guess I looked at you, I didn't ask if you wanted to mention anything else, but.
I think you mentioned.
Okay, okay. Anybody else up here? Out there? Familiar faces out there, so. If not, be adjourned.